Good evening, everybody. I'd like to start this School District of City of Dearborn meeting. This is the regular meeting on Monday, October 8th. First item, please.
Roll call. Hussein Berry here. Fadwa Hamud.
Here.
Mary Lane.
Here.
Celia Nasr.
Here.
Mary Pacheco.
Here.
James Thorpe.
Here.
President Mead.
Here. Next item, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag. Mr. Zachary Short, Principal at Hague Elementary School, introduce students who will lead the pledge of allegiance.
Good evening.
With me today I have three students. These are three of our fifth grade students, so I figured in their last year it'd be a great honor for them to come over and represent us.
Good.
Say your name.
My name is Zainab.
My name is Seema.
My name is Ali Badawi.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Come on up, please.
Welcome to the... Zainab?
That was great.
This is for you, Naija. Man Ali, this is for you, and we're going to send you a special certificate in the mail.
She's gonna get one soon, then.
Yeah, she is, but we don't have it right now.
What's your name? S.E. H.Y.A.I. I'll stand hand for it. Mr. Short, may I get it to you, okay?
Nice job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Superintendent's update. First item's agenda items.
So, first thing I would just like to ask us to do, we had a tragedy at Dearborn High. We had a student that passed away, and I'd like us just to take a moment of silence as we send our thoughts and prayers to him, his family. Thank you, everyone. And I don't have any agenda items.
Okay.
Non-agenda items?
So, I have a few things. I'm gonna start with Mr. Weiss. Carl Weiss is gonna come for a normal update on infrastructure.
Thank you, Dr. Malakow. Pleasure to be back again. We've had two task force meetings since the last time I was here.
Task force met on September 26th to take a little building tour. We've been talking about a lot of the issues for the first, there, for the first several meetings, and we wanted to make sure that the task force had an opportunity to see, to experience, to smell, in some cases, the conditions of the buildings. And so, we toured actually a number of buildings. The tour started off at Lowry, and then we divided the task force into two separate buses. One went closer to the west side, and the other stayed on the east side. But the buildings that were covered were Nolan, Zalina, McCullough Yunus, O.L. Smith, Dearborn High School, and Fortson High School. And in each of the buildings, we had a tour guide from the operations department showing us various strengths and various challenge areas in each of the facilities. One of the challenges that we have with our task force is keeping the thinking global. Sometimes people see something in a specific building that really resonates with them, good or bad, and they want to make specific recommendations that at XYZ building, we need to do this. And so, we always try to emphasize with our task force that their task isn't really necessarily to, for example, to pick what color carpeting is gonna go in the classrooms. Their task, their, their, their charge is really more global in nature, and in this example, it would be to say, "Well, we really need carpet in this building because the acoustics are very terrible, and the carpeting would help," something like that. So, at any rate, the tour was a real eye-opener for a lot of people, so we decided at the following meeting on October 5th, we would begin with a debrief on what people saw and their takeaways. And I will tell you that, that we had some pretty interesting comments. One of the things that was, that was really remarkable, though, is the task for, force had prepared a list of district needs prior to going on tour, and that list turned, turned out to be remarkably accurate, prediction of what we saw. There were very few things that, that made it to the takeaway department that really weren't already on the list that the task force had discussed. So, that kind of was a good benchmark for us as, as facilitators. You know, we've been working with them on making sure that their choices are informed by experience and, and the information that's presented to them. So, anyway, we began with a debrief of what they saw. We also heard a presentation on capacity, because several task force members had said that they, they really didn't understand, have a clear understanding of the district's capacity needs, both present and in the future. And, and there were some changes that occurred, you know, in some of the projections, you know, the enrollment projections in particular, in the district, that, you know, were outgrowth of people moving in, or in case, in some cases, people not moving in as, as was expected. They're projections, they're not, they're not an exact science. And then finally, we began, we spent the last part of the meeting prioritizing. The task force is charged with making recommendations in four areas: capacity, safety, safety and security, infrastructure, and whether the district should be investing in air conditioning every building. So, we concluded with some priority, prioritizing activities where we had colored dots, and people told us what their preferences were, which really is going to inform what we do in our, our next meeting, which is our last task force meeting on October 17th. And I'm pretty confident that, that our task force is on track to make sure that we have a very well-informed recommendation for the Board of Education as an outcome of that final meeting.
Good.
That's all I have. If there are any questions? Yes?
Yes. When the task force is actually going in and taking tours throughout various buildings, are you, are we having conversations with employees that work in the buildings? Who's taking you on the tour? Have we heard direct concerns from employees in the buildings?
In some cases, there were some employees that were actually working in the buildings that were, you know, that were there, but because the tours were done in the evening, you're looking at the night staff, basically. Some of the task force members are employees in some of those buildings, though, and they had more to say. And we had, each, each bus group had a tour guide from our operations department, your operations department, I should say. It's a little bit of the old superintendent coming back, sorry. Anyway, and, and they were, they were, they were certain to point out some of, in some of the older buildings, for instance, some of the things that really needed to change. What the, what the committee went away with was a really nice comparison of what was old and what was new, and, you know, I work with three other retired superintendents on this. We've all been through bond campaigns and building renovations, and we were really impressed with the condition of the buildings, old or new. All your buildings were very well-maintained. What we did see, what we did notice was there is a, a significant discrepancy in terms of security and, and entrance security and surveillance cameras in some of the buildings. But we know that that's something that, that the task force is going to be addressing, and it's not, you know, the board is very well, well aware of that.
Thank you. To put things into context, just to follow up on that, Dr. Malakow, it's my understanding that the principals were also interviewed as to what they believe are immediate needs for their own buildings. I know that at some point, we had a conversation, this is a while back, to kind of identify maybe what people, what employees in the actual buildings, you know, get their perspective, because they might see something being in those buildings every day.
Well, I think the way we got their input for now is that long list that Mr. Wall, Mr. Nurgensky put together through the building administrators, but we can always continue to have dialogue with them, and it would happen. The last time there was a bond, there were specific meetings that were then set up with each principal at every location. I wasn't personally involved, because this was the time Superintendent Weston was in charge, but I know some board members, I think, may have been involved too, you know, with it.
Right.
And they went over, and they had specific meetings looking at items that were needed. But Mr. Wall does have that long list of building needs based on that, you remember that $170 million list that was shared during our capacity findings? And I know, I believe that information was also shared with the infrastructure committee.
Yes. Yeah. I just want to make sure that they remain part of the conversation.
Sure.
Because they're the ones in the buildings, they might see, or, or turn our attention to something that maybe, you know, taken a brief tour and not being familiar with the building is, is not. So, if there's any way we can maybe possibly incorporate that, I mean, and I'm not saying that there's a right way to do it, but I think that definitely there should be a dialogue there as this is happening.
Yeah, we can easily get some input from them through our, our normal general administrators' meetings as well, through, like, small group.
Thank you.
Josie Lynn?
You mentioned that you met at Lowry. Was Lowry toured, or no?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
There were a couple of buildings. Lowry and McCullough Yunus were toured by both groups, and then we split off from there and went east and west.
Josie Pentlischkoff?
Well, since I was on the last task force many years ago...
I do know that we incorporated then, and I'm assuming that it's being done now, because every year, I believe, there is a list of wants and needs that every administrator, that every administrator submits to operations, and I'm assuming that you had access to it and it was shared, because that's how we did it. Now, we toured every single, we broke up into groups and toured every single, we each got five buildings, three to five buildings in, in each of our group, and we went and toured them. But we were armed with the knowledge of what the administrators had submitted originally as well, so we kind of knew where to look. And, and then the engineers were there to help point out some of the concerns at that point in time. So, there was always feedback from people who actually knew the building and how it, how it operated and what the issues were. So, I'm assuming we wouldn't deviate from that process to help guide the decision-making down the road.
I think maybe it looked a little different in terms of our meetings and our tour, but I, I'm confident that we covered all of those areas.
Anybody else? Well, thank you very much for your report.
Always a pleasure. Thank you for having me.
Next.
I'm gonna, I have a few more things to mention.
I know what you do. It's next to you.
Thank you. I'm gonna have Mr. Wall come up and just speak to our proactive approach to water testing.
Thank you, Dr. Malakow. Water testing has been a, a pretty high topic in conversation recently with the issues from Flint, from Detroit, and I recently saw an article from Ann Arbor. So, as a district, we have been doing water testing for quite some time. Anytime we have a preschool program, a GSRP, latchkey-type program, we've always had to go through water testing for our buildings. So, we've always been doing that also as an, as needed process. We've been doing it for quite some time.
Good.
The last two years, so we've expanded it, where we actually had a program where we tested every building, did a sample of the water income, the intake into the building, random samples across the building. We did, the first year, we did all the elementaries. The second year, we did all the secondary buildings. So, we've gone through a whole cycle of two years of testing all the buildings and the water source, and a sample of the fixtures. We can't test every fixture, because that's over 4,000 fixtures. So, we've done 572 samples. 23 came back high, and so, we, we tested those and either replaced the fixture, or through a normal flushing program, we were able to get those back into a normal place. So, all our tech fixtures that we did test were, were positive and underneath the appropriate levels. Now, going forward, on that previous test, we got maybe 20%, 25% of our money back from the state on that program. Going forward, the state program no longer exists, but we have set aside $25,000 in our budget annually to go through the whole process systematically over the next couple of years again, and we'll continue to do that going forward. So, I just want to give you some background on the water testing, and I'll take any questions you have.
Josie Pentlischkoff?
Yes.
Who do we use to do the, is it an independent?
Yes, it's an independent firm.
I'm assuming an independent firm that has no affiliation with the district of any kind?
Correct. Yep. Every time we do testing, it'll take two or three weeks for the testing results to come back. We have, review them in operations. Dr. Wall does a great job, he's very knowledgeable about that, and we go through and either address the situation if there's an issue.
And the, and these are accredited?
Correct. Yes.
Josie Berry?
There's a whole, like, page and a half of all the qualifications that I can't memorize.
I know you mentioned that the state gave us some money back last year. Only clarify that this is not mandatory.
Correct. No, we started the process even before the state came out with that.
I just want to make sure that's out there.
Yes.
This is something that we're doing.
Correct. And we're gonna continue to do it.
Thank you.
And we also, if I can just mention, we get the city readings as well, because there are supplies.
Yes.
So, the Dearborn City does their testing, and we get the readings from there.
Yeah, ahead of my list, I missed that one. But we actually do, the state, or the city does it annually, and they provide a report for us for the source of water that's coming into, to all of Dearborn.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along, I just wanted to mention, there is some traffic on social media. We recently had a speaker that was scheduled at Dearborn High, and it was temporarily postponed for a review. The speakers don't come through central office, these are, you know, building principals and teachers make the decisions on there. But there were some comments made, possibly, that it had to do with religion or ethnicity, and that's just not the case. It was basically going through our normal review process, and that, that's all it was. The session will be, it was never actually canceled, it was just post, temporary, put on hold while the process went through, and my understanding is it's gonna be rescheduled shortly. So, I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you.
And also, some very good news, as the board is aware, we'll probably have them come in November, but STEM, our STEM Middle School, was awarded one of the highest honors that you could receive, the highest honor by the U.S. Department of Education, a Blue Ribbon School status. This will be our second school. Yes. So, I want to congratulate the principal, Dr. Green, Mr. Baydoun, the assistant principal, the parents, the students, staff, Board of Education, of course, and administration, because obviously, it's a full-fledged team effort over there, and so, we're very proud of them. I will be going with the principal and a couple staff members to Washington early November to receive the recognition to represent the district, so we'll be very excited and proud to be there.
Super.
Two years in a row, so.
All right.
All right. Wanted to mention a couple other things, too. We have Ms. Faraj and I have mentioned to the board, but our school improvement process, the one where we got our district of distinction, we're gonna be at the Wayne County RISA Board coming up on the 17th in the morning at 8:30. We have a presentation on that, and our model for our graduation intervention, we'll be mentioning. Ms. Peterson will also be with us, and I think most of the executives will be going. Wanted to put a kudos out for Dr. Jill Choco, Mr. David Muston, and Ms. Sue Stanley. All of them went, and we had two presentations. I co-presented with David on our social media outreach, community outreach, and then Ms. Stanley and Dr. Choco presented on our early childhood. So, they did a great job at the State Superintendent Conference last month.
Good.
And Shannon Peterson and Janice Gilliland from the college presented a joint presentation. It was called the Two-Year First Year Conference, a national conference, on their model for the mathematics articulation that we've been working on, so that was very positive. And I know Mr. Cavahuna is here today, too. I also, actually, right now, I am gonna call up the president. He wanted to make a couple comments on the millage, so I'll ask him to come up right now. This is the college millage.
President Russell Cavahuna?
Yes.
We know him.
Thank you, Dr. Malakow and Mr. President. I appreciate your time. I have asked your leadership for an opportunity to at least take no more than 10 minutes to explain to you what is on the ballot this year for the millage of Henry Ford College. Of course, state law requires me, in my official capacity, not to advocate for any type of vote, one way or another. And while it's a little unclear whether I'm acting my official capacity standing before you, I'll err on the side of caution and simply give you information. And I also recognize that as a leader of the community here, there are members of our community, and I do say "our" community on purpose. I, I am a member of this community and a taxpayer also. So, what, what you'll hear me say today is factual, not advocacy. And I hope you understand why. I do have a presentation that I did make available to all, all the board members here, and I have to...
It's up.
Okay, great. The, the election, obviously, is, if you've been living under a rock, I have to tell you, it's November 6th, which is, I think, about five weeks away, and on the ballot will be a renewal of a one-mill millage for the Henry Ford College. We have four mills currently, and one of those mills is up for renewal. I'd like to give you an opportunity to understand what the Henry Ford College offers through its entire offerings, and then, as we proceed, I'll give you more of an idea of what one mill would mean to the college, and I absolutely offer you any opportunity to ask me questions during this presentation. You're probably aware, Henry Ford College has been around for 80 years, and it's been a unique aspect of our community. It's the smallest community college district in our state, and it is Dearborn's Community College. We offer 150 degree and credit, degree and non-degree programs, and the list I've given to you all there explains some of the, some of the diverse offerings we offer to our community. Second to last item there I want to focus your attention on, and that is the English Language Institute. We recognize that we have a very diverse community. In fact, we're proud of that. And the diversity of our community involves many different ways of communicating, i.e. different languages. So, we focus on that, giving graduates of Dearborn and frankly, citizens of Dearborn an opportunity to understand and become more proficient in the English language through education and credit and non-credit programs. We also think that a community college should be a cultural opportunity for the, for the community. We offer music concerts, live theater, art shows. There's a restaurant on our campus. My, my family ate there just last week. It's open, I believe, two nights a week, and, and I believe, three days in the middle of the day. So, if you're interested in seeing the campus, if you're interested in seeing what our students can do in the culinary arts program, this is one of the cultural aspects that the community college in Dearborn offers. Now, you might wonder what the socioeconomic impact is of the college. If you do, and if you're in any community college, frankly, in the country, you'll go to an outfit in Idaho, which is what Henry Ford College did before I started. That outfit is frankly nationally known as the Economic Modeling Specialist International. That, that process was undertaken by someone who I know you all know and respect, that's Becky Chadwick, and she did this throughout her time at the college, and the last time it was done was the fiscal year of 2018. This gives you an opportunity to understand that the, the monies that are invested in, either through, through tuition, taxes, or state investment, what the return is in the Dearborn area. And of course, I, I do believe it is larger than the Dearborn area, but it is significant. You can see here that the economic impact here is about $883 million, and our budget is, is south of $100 million. So, it's fair to say about a 1 to 9 return on your investment there. This group, again, not Henry Ford College, but this group, EMSI, estimates that over 13,000 jobs are supported by the Henry Ford College. If any of you all are approached by citizens, or if any of you all had the interest, I'm happy to make the executive summary and frankly, the broad report that was conducted by this group to pick apart parts of that. And I'll, I'll just tell you that I'm interested in that also, so I'll, I'll probably be making it available to you all in your capacities as Board of Trustees members next week at our board meeting. So, what is this renewal? If it is, if it is passed, what does it cost a, a Dearborn taxpayer? The average homeowner would pay $4.50 per month for this, and, and I'll be candid there, they're still paying about that much now. If they vote yes, it'll renew this amount. If they vote no, this will come off of their property taxes. That aggregates to $54 a year. Either way, $54 a year on your tax bill, my tax bill, if you vote yes, $54 off of your tax bill for the average home, if you vote no. What these expenses, and, and that, that breaks out to about 5% of our operating budget, or a little north of $4 million. Those expenses, those monies would be used to fund several major initiatives that are listed before you. And one layer below this slide is important, or I think, your, your duties here as board members, and that is the dual enrollment aspect of our college is something...
I don't think that slide is up.
Thank you, Mr. President. The hazards of having two computers. The dual enrollment aspect of our, of our college is something we're very proud of. By estimates now, I think we're north of 2,000 Dearborn students that are currently taking advantage. When I say Dearborn, I mean Dearborn Public School students currently taking advantage of college coursework at the Henry Ford College while they are enrolled in, in the school board that you oversee, the school system that you oversee. And it is possible, and sometimes it actually happens, that, that students in the Dearborn Public School system will achieve two years of college credit before they leave you all as Dearborn Public School students. Certainly, it's very common for them to achieve one year, and the savings for that are frankly just large. I also want to note that if you took 10 kids who came out of your system, and then all 10 of those wanted to go to college, right now, just under four of them are attending Henry Ford College. We take that seriously, that the kids that grow up in this district and graduate from its public school system choose us four times out of 10 if they decide to go to college. The, one question that I've been asked recently is, how do, how do our taxes in Dearborn compare to other community colleges that do a similar job to us? And this, this graph is, it's got small numbers on it, but it carries a lot of information, so I'll just, I'll very quickly run through what, what's going on here. The blue, the blue bars are what each community college is getting in the number of dollars from property taxes. And I had this graph built to go up in, up in numbers. We, we tech, we, right now, get about $13 million in property taxes with the four mills that we're talking about. And community colleges that are in the same type of area as us are Macomb, Grand Rapids, Lansing, Washtenaw, Wayne, and Oakland. And you can see, those are the numbers of dollars that those schools capture for property taxes. And, and just simply, the blue lines would, blue bars wouldn't be that useful. So, what I've overlaid here is the red line describing how many students those schools serve. So, you can see that we serve about 9,000 students. Macomb serves about 14,000 students, and then we have 11,000. You can see the graph. So, we have several schools here that serve either a similar number or even less than we do, with significantly more property taxes than, than we recover. Now, what's the, what's the relevance of this? The relevance is that we have four mills, and I need to be candid with you that no other community college has four mills. And the reason why we have four mills is because we have a smaller district, and we've elected as a community to deliver resources in the, in the, in the same level and quality that these other community colleges show here. Let me show you one more graph that kind of shows that. These are the operating budgets. These are the operating budgets of those same community colleges. Here in Henry Ford College, we're about $87 million for our operating budget, and we take in 15% of that budget from property taxes. Now, you just saw, this is the same community colleges, you just saw all those same community colleges and their level of enrollment, and they go up as the graph moves to the right. You can see that every single other community college has a budget well north of $100 million. And of that $100 million, there's much more of a percentage of that that is gained by property taxes. Now, those, those districts have less mills, but they are bringing in significantly less to their operating budget. And we're sa, we are serving, in some cases, more students, but in all cases, at least similar amounts. So, that explains why you have four mills in Dearborn. We're competing with these schools, and we are keeping the operating budget below all of them. And frankly, that's what a voter needs to think about, is what, what does Henry Ford College do for the community? Is it competing with these institutions, or is it something different? So, another question I get is, well, what do Dearborn students pay to use this resource? And this is a comparison with those same community colleges and the in-district tuition rate. You can see that there is only two community colleges that charge less for in-district tuition. And remember, those, those are the same community colleges with those very large operating budgets, and with the percentage of those operating budgets being much more than the 16% that Dearborn taxpayers pay for Henry Ford Colleges. Finally, one question I often get is, well, if we looked at what we, what we generate from revenue from Dearborn taxpayers and non-Dearborn taxpayers, what would that look like? And, and this graph shows that. On the left, you have last year's... On the left, you have last year's, uh, excuse me, estimated for this year, the end of fiscal year 18, what you have is the property tax and the tuition and fees we take from Dearborn residents. That aggregates to be about $23 million. Now, if you took all the tuition from students who attend Henry Ford College who are outside of Dearborn's district, that would be almost $28 million. So, if you're a taxpayer in, in Dearborn and you have a family member who attends Henry Ford College, um, you can ask, well, is my tax dollars and my tuition dollars doing more or less than what out-of-district students, um, bring in, in revenue? And the answer is that out-of-district, um, tuition, uh, more than achieves what you as a taxpayer and a user of Henry Ford College does. Um, and the last point I'll say on this, um, is, you know, about 60% of our enrollees are from out of the district. That's how this number on this graph on the right side is so large. And, um, the, the one-mill renewal is about 5% of our budget that keeps the left-hand side of this graph, um, where it is. The, uh, the board meeting that I presented to you all, I noted that, um, without the mill, um, probably in at least one and a half and potentially two years, we would see a budget shortfall, um, without the mill. And, and, and of course, as your president, we would deal with it. I'm not suggesting we wouldn't. Um, I'm just telling you what would happen. Uh, November 6th is when you get to vote, and, um, I hope you do vote, and if you have any questions for me about this process, I'd be happy to answer any. Um, I do appreciate, uh, Mr., Dr. Malakow, I know it's hard to run a meeting on time, and I promised 10 minutes, which I probably violated.
Very. Not by much. Trustee Thorpe?
More of just a comment. Uh, last week, all registered voters in the district, uh, should have received something from a committee that is working on behalf of the college, uh, with the facts. President Cavalluna and the board had nothing to do with that, because I've had people question, why did every single resident that's a registered voter get it? Isn't that a waste of money? That decision was made by another group. It was not your taxpayer dollars going back in, uh, with duplicate mailings. Thanks.
Trustee Elaine?
Uh, President Cavalluna, I'd like to thank you for explaining the one slide that I find most persuasive in there, um, is the one that talks about, uh, I'm not an economist, obviously, but when we have discussion of our tax dollars and how they're increased by public investment, uh, so a one to nine ratio. Um, I'm a frequent critic, as you know, of tuition increases, and I generally oppose those, but I do think that voters need to think about, uh, their home values, the value of this community. Dearborn has been a very desirable community, and our investments are, all of our investments have kept our property values good, and houses are highly sought after, even though we are a high-tax district. I appreciate particularly public investment, uh, and throughout our history, we have many, many examples of that. These days, uh, because everybody hates to pay taxes, there's generally public discussion of less taxes, less taxes, uh, and we end up just paying for those things privately, and then somebody makes a profit off us. But there are great examples throughout history of, of really synergistic public projects that were massive in scope, the interstate highway system, the Erie Canal, electrification of rural areas. In the beginning, those things were thought, why are we spending public money on those? But the reality is that, uh, the Erie Canal, for example, although the whole state of New York had to pay for it, it opened up, uh, settlement in Michigan and Ohio, and it was a boon to New York State. It made New York the biggest harbor on the East Coast. So, I believe those type of public investments are, are very valuable, so, uh, as I say, I, I normally oppose a tuition increase, because I think that we want to keep our costs as economical as possible for our students, but I, I do appreciate the return on investment, and I hope that people will think about that when they're thinking about whether to support the millage. Uh, so, I hope that's, uh, something that people will consider. One suggestion that I'd like to make is that the district offers a Golden Ager Card. Uh, David is smiling, because I think he's the person that has to do those all the time. But, uh, there are cultural events at the college, and I've been to some of those, and I don't see, uh, many people in the community who know about them. I think that needs to be advertised better, and I think that the college should think about a Golden Ager Card also. Uh, I don't think that if you gave a Golden Ager Card, which is for retirees, because let's face it, retirees have lost a lot, they've, retirees have had their taxes increased so that corporations can pay less, but I think as a city, uh, and as a college district, we should offer some rewards. I don't think it would ever make seats unavailable for the paying public. That's not the case generally at our athletic events, but it is something that I think that the college should think about, to bring in our retiree community and, and the rest of our community into the college for, uh, the, the cheapest, uh, symphony or, or theater that, that people can get, not to forget the, uh, planetarium also. So, I would suggest that, and just remind Dr. Malakow, I think we usually get board passes to athletic events, which we haven't gotten yet also.
Well, the, um, what they're doing-
Since I have the floor, I might as well bring up as many things as possible, right?
Well, what they're allowing now is actually your pass allows you to get in it. David, isn't it two people get in, so now it's two-
You, you and one guest can get in to any athletic event.
So, now it's your ID, actually. So, and that's for all employees in the district, that they can do that, yeah.
And glad that we're announcing it then, because anybody else maybe can find out as well. But are we still doing the Golden Ager Card also? So, let's have, uh, that mentioned as well, and I guess I'm really timely, because Dr. Malakow is going to show what's in the, and I did not look in there.
Yeah, okay. Just timely.
It, it just pops to mind, but I think it's something else that the college should consider, so.
I'm happy to consider it.
Also, uh, with the college, senior citizens, that is, people over age 60, uh, get free tuition for any courses that they want to take. They do have to pay fees, but they do not have to pay tuition, so that also is something that should be advertised more broadly. Anybody else? Thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry, trustee Barry?
Just to get your attention, just like, uh, President Cavalluna said, I'm not advocating for or against, but I know I've heard in the community the word renewal, renewal, renewal. I'm just going to make it very simple and just read what's going to be on the ballot. Henry Ford Community College Millage Continuation Proposal. This millage proposal would continue the existing one-mill levied by the school district of the city of Dearborn and allocated for Henry Ford College for general operating purposes, which millage was voted for in 2013 for five years, which will expire with the school district 2018 tax levy. For five years from 2019 to 23, 23, that would be the renewal, that would be the continuation another five years. That's what the ballot, that's what's going to be on the ballot, the word continuation. So, I'm seeing what you want.
So, the expiration date is December 31st of 2018?
It says with the school district's 2018 tax levy. No.
I don't know what that means.
Tax levy would be for next year.
Oh, be for 19?
For 19.
I think what, uh, board member Barry is expressing is, uh, a difference between the word continuation and renewal, and to the extent that I need to make the record clear, I'm happy to do that. Um, and-
That's what's on the list, to me, this is off the ballot.
And I, if, if anyone perceives me not being accurate, let me be as clear as I can. When I say renewal, uh, in my mind, it's synonymous with continuation, but board member Barry is using the actual language, and continuation is what's on the, um, the ballot, and, um, it is continuing or renewing. Um, but I, I, I'll take any, any recommendation or criticism about my verbiage and try to-
Didn't mean anything by that, I was just clarifying what it says. That's, it's a continuation of a tax increase in 2013.
I appreciate you, uh, in fact, reading, reading the language is always useful. I appreciate that, board member Barry.
Trustee Thorpe?
So, again, for clarity, uh, this millage continuation would take effect July 1st of 2019 for the college, so if it doesn't pass, we don't need to make any changes in the budget for this current school year.
Uh, that, that is, um, 95% correct. And the 5% would be, we always budget at least two years and most times, five years out.
Okay.
So, noting our, our income, we, we might make changes, um, knowing that, that 5% of the budget for that one-mill would not be there. I, I simply can't tell you if that would be the case, but-
That's fine. Thanks.
Anybody else? Thank you, President Cavalluna.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Dr. Malakow. I tried to be fast. Appreciate the, since you've been here in the great partnership with the college and with you, so thank you for that collaborative, uh, model moving forward. Thank you.
Next item? No, wait a minute, there's HFC millage. Oh, that is done. Next item?
Recognition Acknowledgements. New staff introductions, Dearborn Teacher University.
So, I'm going to have Ms. Farage and Mr. Sederlin and Ms. Arani come up. Mr. Sederlin from Human Resources, Ms. Farage, Executive Director, and Ms. Arani is involved with the teaching university. And we will have a video at the end.
Good evening. Uh, we all had a great time before the meeting with a, a short reception for our new hires. There's, there are several of them who are hopefully still here in the audience, and, uh, I'd like to call them up and, uh, let them introduce themselves, the school that they work for, and I have a, a wonderful gift for them, a card from Dr. Malakow and a, uh, lapel pin. Or a pin that you could put on your lapel, or wherever you choose to put your pin. So, if I could ask those, I think we had about, uh, a little more than a dozen, come on up, please, and it-
And Mr. Sederlin, I understand-
I know it's been a, a long day for school teachers. Some of our secondaries have been up and working for over 12 hours now, so, and this is a staff meeting day, so it's, it's a long day for these staff members. So, I appreciate those, uh, those that came. They're a representative of approximately 110 new hires that we've had this year of, of, uh, classroom teachers, social workers, psychologists, uh, physical therapists.
110?
110 is where we're currently at. We have a few vacancies still left in the field.
I thought it was 70.
No, we, we were 75 at the orientation. When, when you presented at orientation, we were 75. We've, uh, increased since then, so. Please come forward, introduce yourselves, where you teach, what you do, if you're not a teacher.
Hello, I'm Rebecca DeBoer, and I'm at William Ford in the new K-2 mildly cognitively impaired room. So, special one.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Chantel Blalock. I am a special education resource room teacher at Bryant Middle School. I'm a product of Dearborn Public Schools, and I'm honored to be here.
Thank you, Chantel.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Shelley Caldwell. I'm a fifth grade teacher at Maples Elementary.
Thank you, Shelley. Welcome aboard.
Hi, I'm Deborah Carr. I teach mathematics at Edsel Ford High School.
Thank you, Deborah.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Scott Brewer. I teach ninth grade English at Fortson High School.
Thanks, Scott. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Tara Bowen, and I'm at William Ford doing STEAM and Math Resource.
I'm Zahra Busi. I'm the school social worker at Smith, and this is Jenna.
Jenna's a lot of good stuff.
Hi, Miriam Alway, school social worker at Howe.
Thanks.
Hello, uh, my name is Diana Ori. I am a post-secondary severely multiply impaired teacher at Howe.
Good for you.
Thank you.
Hello, I am Trevor DeBono. I teach mathematics at Dearborn High School. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Lorraine Davood. I'm a resource teacher. I'm Akala Yunus. Go Aviators.
Let's, uh, congratulations to all the new hires.
And that's just a sampling, and I, I want to thank our, our building administrators, our teams in our buildings for helping us recruit. Uh, we, we bring them in the door, we go out, you know, search far and wide. One of the teachers is actually, she moved into Michigan just last year, uh, from Washington State. So, when I say far and wide, it's, it's, it's pretty broad. Uh, we also recruit a lot at the Michigan Job Fairs. Uh, recruiting is part of it, retaining them is another part of it, so I'm going to turn it over to our, uh, our, our, our team that trains our new teachers with the, the mentoring program in Dearborn Teacher University for a very short presentation. I'll introduce Hilda, or you introduce.
Good evening, everyone. As you can see, we have a great system of support for our new staff. Many of them come to us with, uh, lots of experience when they start in Dearborn, so we have a program that's tailored specifically to what they need when they first come to the district. I want to thank all of them and wish them a great year, and I'm going to turn it to Ms. Hilda Irani, who's doing a great job with the Dearborn Teacher University program to support our new teachers.
Thank you.
Can, can I just mention too, that, um, when Ms. Farage received the promotion, we did not fill that position Director in Fiscal Responsibility. We are reserving the right next year to work with the board on the potential, but for this year, we thought it would be a, a wise decision not to, so that they're actually, both of them are picking up a little bit of extra load, so we appreciate the great work they're doing. And I also just want to mention the great work that Mr. Sederlin does with all these hires. I, I mean, I think we're getting over 500 and something over the last three years, teachers, so it's been busy, 1,500, so.
It's a project, and keeping them all welcomed and, and onboard and training is a big part of the Dearborn Teacher University's support. One of the things that we sell, when we sell Dearborn schools, uh, that, that students, that current graduates coming out of colleges, they really want that professional development, and millennials love professional development. They may not say they do, because it's a long part of the day, but they, they really do like the support, and Hilda will give a brief presentation.
Hi, thank you.
Hello, um, thank you for having me this evening. Uh, very briefly, Dearborn Teacher University, so, uh, we work, uh, in tandem with Human Resources. Um, as, you know, Mr. Sederlin mentioned, and we, they are hired, uh, our building administrators then, uh, contact us, and we work in tandem with them to assign them a mentor. Every new hire, uh, per state guidelines has a mentor for three years. Those coming to us with previous teaching experience, of course, uh, only need a mentor for two. And, uh, professional development is provided through our office, uh, with cooperation of other departments and coordinators and, uh, you know, trainees that we have here in the district to make sure that they get the PD that they do need. A brief overview of our, some of the support we provide, so besides having monthly professional development that they can attend, we have a blog. Oh, I can get video started. That's okay, real good. It's all good, not a problem. So, we do maintain a blog that we encourage all our mentees and mentors to visit. On the blog is, uh, the Dearborn Teacher University Handbook, which, uh, you have access to there. The handbook, uh, contains all the state guidelines, as well as district, uh, obligations that they need to follow, uh, record-keeping, um, information that they can use, and as well as our professional development dates. We try to be as flexible as possible, and the flexibility really comes based on their feedback. So, uh, with every session that we have, we always ask them what works, what doesn't work, and we tweet things over last year. We've, uh, offering alternate start times and, uh, ending for high school, as well as elementary. Uh, we provide them with, uh, topics that range from, you know, special education, our EL services, assessment, uh, technology, of course, uh, parent talk, um, a little bit of everything. So, no matter who the person is that's coming to us in Dearborn, whether they are elementary or secondary, middle, uh, syllary staff, uh, you know, special education, phys ed, music, we try to give them a nice, well-rounded taste of what Dearborn has to offer. Um, in terms of size, so I know, uh, Mr. Sederlin mentioned, we've hired so far, uh, a little over 100 new teachers this year alone. Uh, currently, we have 378 teachers in the Dearborn Teacher University program. So, these are teachers years one, two, and three, and we meet with them, as well as their mentors, several times a year, and that puts us a little close to 700 teachers that we work with, that we deal with, uh, email, phone calls. Uh, new this year, we were doing a lot more of school visits, so, uh, anyone that was not at the August orientation, uh, we've actually made site visits, and we meet with them and their mentor, answer questions, kind of give them a taste of this is what Dearborn's about, just providing that contact and making sure that the support is always there. Um, let's see, what else? Feedback, we talked about that. We really want to make, um, their meetings more, uh, powerful and, and applicable to what they're doing. So, this past week, for example, when mentors and mentees came here for, uh, their, uh, meeting, we gave them the opportunity to actually work on their self-evaluation for their, for their teacher evaluation. So, they worked together in teams. We, Fatih and I were there to answer questions, and the feedback was overwhelmingly tremendous. I was really happy with how the process went, because we knew that we were giving them time to work together, provide the- provide the support that they need, and make it something that's one less thing for them to have to do when they went home. So that's kind of a little bit of what we do. Questions you might have? I'm very excited about the program. I really feel that what we're, we're taking the step in the right direction and making them, you know, part of Dearborn Public Schools is just a great place to be, so.
Well, it's a very, very important program. I did get a chance to talk to some of the new teachers before the meeting, and they, I asked each one, do you know who your mentor is? And they did.
Good.
And they indicated that they were, that the school system is well organized. They feel very supported, and some of them have had teaching experience before, so they know other systems, and they think that this system is working very well for them. And I mentioned to them that they should follow up with you if they have any problems at all, because we want them to stay here as long as possible, keep recruiting. Don't we have fourteen hundred teachers? Is that about what it is?
Total DFT staff is a little over fourteen hundred, but that includes support staff, ancillary, professional staff.
All right, so about, so about half of them is, are in your program.
Almost, yeah, between the-
But that's really important, because we really do need to retain these teachers, and they seem to be very happy right now.
Hope so.
Okay, any-
The smile on my face.
Trustee Elaine?
I'd like to apply the same enticements of the Teacher University to the next presentation that we're going to have on bus drivers. At least, I think we should try to sell ourselves as a district in a time of high employment by the fact that we, people don't get laid off as much here. People have stability, they have opportunities to move around. I I guess if you're driving a bus, you can't like move up to driving a Hummer or anything bigger, but, I mean, bus is probably as big as you can get. But but I think there are other opportunities for people, and I think that should be a selling point. I don't know whether we have any other, Mr. Andrews is here, I don't know whether there's professional development. I know our bus drivers do usually win some awards, and maybe the gold medal serves as a nice enticement. But, yeah, it it should be something that benefits our district, our size, our, the efficiency, and the the way we're run. I mean, when I, when I see other districts, I think that we're, we're pretty well-run.
Trustee Thorpe?
Do the new teachers have the same mentor their whole three years, or do they change at some point?
Normally, they do, as long as they remain in the same building, but between transfers and such, or if they're, you know, the request comes through from the building administrator or from the teacher. But the plan is usually for two to three years, it is the same mentor.
Okay.
We want that consistency and support.
Trustee Barry? Did you want, okay, anybody else? Trustee Hamud?
First of all, thank you for everything that you're doing, and I know that hopefully we're providing the teachers with the resources. We can always do better, right? Especially with professional development and making sure that the teachers have the resources that they have. Even though things are getting better, we still have a lot of work to do, especially for our teachers. I want to talk specifically as to the new teachers, and I know we talked, Dr. Maleko, this is for the whole district, as to Title IX training, sexual harassment training, and when that's happening, do you work with? You don't do any of that, no?
They don't, no.
So the new teachers will be going through that?
The entire district is. In fact, all the administrators have been trained, and there's actually a video with one of our attorneys put together, and Mason Molly Bazey's leading that. There'll be a mandatory training that will be unveiled for all staff at their faculty meeting coming up soon, I believe, in the next month. I mean, may have, some of it may have been today, actually, was there a faculty meeting? But I know they had like a month to get it done, so every single staff will be trained. That that will also include non-instructional at some point, too. So we're planning to train everyone.
Awesome, thank you.
Well, thank you very much for your presentation.